You did. It was the year. Thank you.
Okay, there are no special orders of business tonight. There are no minutes to approve tonight. And we have oral and written communication. Members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of the Public Interest which pertain to the city and are not on our agenda this evening. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. And you'll please limit your presentation to three minutes. Are there any cards, Madam Secretary? Further? With that, there is nothing on our consent calendar. We'll go into... So this is something that's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, well now, get into the public hearings, which is, of course, zoning amendment 15-426, short-term lodging units. And with that, I'd like to open the public comment period and invite people that have anything to talk about to have to speak. So, Madam Secretary, do we have any cards for this particular item? Okay. Mr. Van Delk, you've got yourself coordinated here. Van Delk, you have people lined up in your cards here, if you have further email, or just you?
It's just gonna be, we're not doing the presentation like we had talked about, but I have a couple of slides.
You do. Just you alone.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. First card up is Mr. Jeff Bossen, Orange County Vacation Rental Association.
It seemed, watching the videos and attending these meetings, there was a lot of back-and-forth, and it seemed the big problem was not really knowing how to define a vacation rental as residential or commercial use. And I couldn't really find anything either way out there until I came across a couple of things that I wanted to share with the Commission. So the United States Conference of Mayors, which obviously is our country's official nonpartisan organization for U.S. cities of more than 30,000 residents. The organization sets policy as a collective voice of municipalities and their leaders. They also undertake studies on issues, and in 2012, they studied this topic specifically, short-term vacation rentals. Their findings were: The U.S. Conference of Mayors urges support for economic development opportunities through the visitors' industry by encouraging regulations of short-term rental industry that do three things. Number one, establish a reliable way for the municipality to identify and contact the short-term rental owner. Number two, make the tax collection and remittance obligations clear to the short-term rental owner. And three, most importantly, treat short-term rental tenants the same as long-term rental tenants. Regulations that accomplish all three can achieve a high level of compliance and are highly effective. Onerous regulations of short-term rentals can drive the industry underground, thus evading local regulations and local hotel taxes, and are ultimately ineffective. So that is the United States Conference of Mayors. That's their finding. The California Coastal Commission has been quoted as saying the following: "In general, under the Coastal Act, vacation rentals represent a high priority visitor-serving use that should be promoted as a means to provide overnight accommodations and support increased coastal opportunities." Also, the use of private land suitable for visitor-serving, commercial, recreational facilities designed to enhance public opportunities for coastal recreation shall have priority over private residential, general industrial, or general commercial development, but not over agriculture or coastal-dependent industries. And finally, due to their function as a high priority visitor-serving use, the California Coastal Commission has generally interpreted local zoning ordinances in a broad fashion and found that short-term rentals or vacation rentals are a form of residential use permitted by right in any residentially-zoned area unless such uses are specifically prohibited otherwise. Those are the two real main things that guide us in defining short-term rentals in San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don Slater.
Thank you. Hello. Last time I was here, there were many things that I would have liked to have tried to shed some light on, but it's not allowed to talk. I have to just sit there and bear it. I never treated anybody like that in the nine years that I ran a community, and I never told anybody they couldn't talk. I had people speak up and turn my Mac board around and send it in another direction, and it was the correct direction, not the direction we were going. You're missing out on a lot that way. People show up with one car. This is my business. This is my apartment building. I'm talking about multi-unit here. People usually only cook one meal a day, which means they're eating in the restaurants in town or wherever they go, at Disneyland, or Anaheim, or Hollywood, or whatever makes them happy. Guests enjoy space and privacy. They like to have the room for their kids to go so they can enjoy their lives too. They don't want to be stuck in one room with two queen beds in the same room and one TV. These aren't rich people, but these are middle-class, blue-collar people, firemen from Colorado and people from all over the world. But this is what they can afford, and this is what they want to do. They're nearly always quiet. I just have very rarely had a problem, and if I did, it was very simple to knock on the door and mention to them that this was an issue. My TOT license is a bunch of zeros and eight, nine. That should have something to say as to whether I can stay in business, not a lottery. I have a business license, along with every other apartment owner in this city. They have a business license also. And my guests tell me they have no interest in staying in hotels. They wouldn't be here in this city. They wouldn't be spending money in this city without the option of coming to a residence, an apartment, a home. So, they just wouldn't be here. We'd be denying them that access, and they would go to another city and spend their money where they can. So, please, this is all the things I wanted to say, and a little while later, I've gotten to say it. Thank you.
Mr. Diana Rudolph?
Good evening. My name is Diana Rudolph. My husband and I own a duplex over by North Beach on Caillou Las Palas. Just a couple of facts I'd like you to consider. 2.1% of all multifamily dwellings rentals in San Clemente are used as short-term rentals. The other 98%, roughly, are available to anyone to rent, working class, whomever, as I'm assuming long-term rentals. The short-term rental, multi-unit families, like one that we own, I feel don't pose any threat to affordable housing. I heard that being mentioned in one of the meetings, that it was a concern of residents here in San Clemente. In regards to zoning, I understand the R1 issues, as these are traditional neighborhoods. However, many R2-zone duplexes, like ours in North Beach, face the casino and Miramar Theater. So, the reality is, we're really in a mixed-use situation. I mean, we can hear knuckleheads literally down the street. So, just would like, I would hope that situations like ours, when you're considering your zoning decision, is taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harry Snyder?
Good evening. I want to specifically address the issue regarding number of active units that's been bantered about in terms of specific areas. Again, I know that North, I'm gonna speak to North Beach. We love North Beach. I know that there's a gentleman here that also lives in North Beach. But the specific area that we live in, facing the casino, the newly renovated Ole Hansen, which we're all excited about, my neighbors on either side of us are also doing short-term rentals. We're duplexes now, multi-unit units. And when the weddings come, we don't host the weddings, but when the bride of the groom or the family, they love the fact that they can stay at our place, they can stay at either the neighbors, they can walk across the street to the casino, or soon-to-be Ole Hansen. And I just think that there needs to be some consideration taken into account when it comes to zoning, as far as where some of these are located. I mean, if the concept of active units in a specific area goes into play, then, you know, as an example, maybe I'll still have my rental, and the families wouldn't be able to stay right next door, which is really the whole, I think, appeal. I mean, has anyone been to the Patriot Hotel or the Best Western? That's not where families that are getting married want to stay. I mean, they're really looking for a nice place, and the proximity and ability to walk over, I think, makes a huge difference. Also, wanted to address the fact that, yes, we do face the theater, knuckleheads, the casinos. So, I'm a little bit concerned, because although we are zoned R2, I don't consider us to be a, at least where we are, a traditional neighborhood in North Beach. I mean, there's no houses across the street. It's all commercial, and yet, we're R2. So if the zoning comes into play where R2s, yeah, those aren't gonna make the cut, as an example, for short-term rentals, we're very concerned, because, you know, we look at what's about, all about us, and it's commercial, yet we're not zoned as multi-commercial usage. So that, I think there are exceptions to all these rules, and I would hope that you guys would take some of that into consideration. So, and I just want to close by saying, you know, we've been doing this for over a year. We've never had any complaints, and I would hope that no matter how this whole thing goes, that you would consider the possibility of grandfathering in the people that have invested an enormous amount of time and money to make these places really nice and are able to host and bring people into our wonderful city. So, thank you for listening to me. Have a great night. Thank you.
Mr. Brad Dendel?
Thank you. In considering whether and how to regulate, please take into account how free-market forces are already limiting short-term rentals here and in other beach towns in Southern California. Short-term vacation rentals have demand in every resort town in the world, but there is limited need and therefore limited demand for these kind of rentals. This is illustrated by the numbers represented in the slide here regarding how many vacation rentals there are as a percentage of total dwelling units in each Southern California beach town listed. Most of them do not exceed 1.9% of the total dwelling unit. So I know there's claims of like it's gonna take over the town, and it's just gonna become this escalation, but you can see from all these, from the statistics here, that that's just not the case. The main marketplace for vacation rentals is VRBO. For San Clemente, it lists 341 units, and many of which are 30 days or more or part-time. In 2013, there were 328 listings, and just today, there were 341 listings, which is actually two less than three days ago, which is a net gain of 13 units over two years. Owners have been able to, without restriction, create vacation rentals, so why hasn't this grown more? Because demand for these rentals is limited. In fact, many homeowners and managers I have spoken with agree that we have hit the balance point of supply and demand here, as we have all seen off-season prices drop and calendars filling up later than previous years. It has also been positioned that vacation rentals are lowering affordable housing stock for the working class and driving up rental prices by reducing inventory. The facts do not support this, and the need to limit vacation rentals at all in multifamily and mixed zones for the following reasons. Jim Nixley. There are approximately 4,513 apartment housing units in San Clemente, not including condos or affordable housing developments. Of those, there are approximately 93 vacation rental units, which represent just 2.1% of all apartment dwellings in San Clemente. It is statistically impossible to say that these units would have any effect on the other 98% of apartment dwellings. So why isn't every apartment owner west of I-5 making their short-term rental, their month-to-month or yearly lease properties into a vacation rental? Number one, there's limited demand. Market for long-term rentals is strong, and most will not see enough return to justify the income. Short-term rental income is not consistent with long, not as consistent like long-term rentals. It costs between $60,000 and $100,000 to convert a single unit with three to four years' return investment. There is necessity for short-term rentals in San Clemente for residents, events, and visitors, which fits into the general plan. Please create common-sense regulations that protect property rights for rental owners to provide for these needs without the needs of quotas, density limits, and other complex and unnecessary regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia Manning?
Good evening. Prior to make a recommendation to the City Council on whether the zoning ordinance should be amended to allow STLUs in low-density zones west of I-5, I asked the planning commissioners to first remember who and what they represent. It is the public at large and the public's interests. It is not just the people in the meeting room, but it's all of those who are home, too. Simply, it is everybody who lives in the community and who must abide by any changes made to the zoning ordinance. With the public's interest in mind, planning commissioners must then consider the effect the amendment to the zoning ordinance will have on the public's interest. Question of who will be harmed and who will benefit from the amendment must be examined. Will the zoning ordinance benefit just a few individuals at the expense of the residents in the community? Finally, recommendations made by the planning commissioner, commission must consider future as well as current generations. The City Council, planning commission, and planning director have the responsibility to determine whether a proposed land use is consistent with the general plan, and virtually every planning consideration should begin with this consistency consideration. The general plan is the blueprint and provides the framework for all zoning and land uses within a community. San Clemente's land use primary goals seek to retain and enhance established residential neighborhoods and maintain our small-town character. The residential land use goal is to achieve a mix of residential neighborhoods and housing types that meets the diverse economic and physical needs of the residents and that is compatible with existing neighborhoods. To accommodate its citizens' diverse housing needs, San Clemente has established five residential zoning districts with five mixed-use districts and two commercial districts that allow residences. California state law requires that all land uses authorized by zoning ordinance be compatible with the general plan's goals and policies. San Clemente's zoning ordinance must not be amended to allow STLUs in low-density residential zones west of I-5 because of the unarguable harm STLUs cause to the residents' health, safety, and welfare, as evidenced by San Clemente's explicit prohibition of second-dwelling units in this area. San Clemente zoning ordinance treats this area with deference because of, among other things, its lack of infrastructure, limited parking, and traffic. Our housing element in from 2008 to 2013 states, second-dwelling units are not permitted in this zone west of I-5 because of the infrastructure, limited infrastructure capacity, and the impact by beach traffic and parking. STLUs demand even more infrastructure, more parking, and create more traffic than second-dwelling units, and therefore are more injurious to the public's health and safety. Accordingly, STLUs are incompatible with the existing neighborhoods in low-density zones and therefore incompatible with our general plan and should not be made part of... Thank you.
Thank you. Last card for the evening, Mr. Jim Bieber. Your card. Is this how you pronounce your name, Bieber?
Bieber.
Bieber, sorry.
Thank you. It was a, quite a surprising meeting, last meeting. I appreciate the commissioners who asked some serious questions and took this endeavor seriously. And there were some commissioner members that, you know, if I owned an art gallery, you would be like the perfect patrons, because you would look at art and you would say, "I feel, this makes me think, I moved by," and kind of skip over all the technical aspects, the law, how this applies to your job, and kind of leading with, "I feel, I feel, I feel." I almost wish we had that board game that adults play called Taboo, where somebody says, "I feel," or "I think," or "we should," a buzzer would come out, because that would kind of curtail a lot of the muddled thought. You know, when I ask you, "What's the economic impact of banning these?" would be, "I don't know. I feel like they're not good for our neighborhood." When I ask you, "You know, what about the widow who spoke at the City Council who said her livelihood was tied in to being able to rent out this property? If you ban this, you're putting her out in the street." "I don't know. I feel these are good for our neighborhoods," on and on and on. I give you example upon example. So, I don't want to, how to appeal to you, other than to appeal to your hearts and tell you that you are screwing over your neighbors if you ban vacation rentals. My wife and I own two. They're located in a residential neighborhood. All of our neighbors love it. They love it. They've had their relatives stay there. They've had friends that have stayed there. Just this week, I said, "Oh, I'll go with my wife and meet the new people who are staying there." It's a lady from Toledo. She's getting divorced, needs a place to stay. The first people we rented out to, another family from another part of the city. Their house was flooded. They needed a place to stay. Oh, no, I can give you examples of us serving the community, because they don't want to stay at the Patriot or Sea View, and they can't afford to stay anywhere else. It's a benefit. We had some surfer champion stay in our place just right off of Cadiz. The neighborhood had a potluck for the guests of our... They all know that it's there. We had an open house for our neighborhoods. They all benefit from it. So, outside of me, who, you know, you'll be screwed by, or who you're screwing by just not addressing the basic facts of how does this play into having affordable housing for the Coastal Commission, the lady that you're gonna throw out in the street, when I asked Councilman Egelson, "The City Council is putting in all sorts of ironclad rules on parties, noises, parking, everything you can imagine to squall these party houses that I found offensive, that we don't tolerate. Why wouldn't this body have a pause and see how these are gonna go into effect? Will it deter? Will it improve? Will the problem that if it exists completely disappear before you outright ban them? What would be the harm in waiting and seeing how those would affect the communities?" Well, I mean, your answer was, "Well, we shouldn't have the police police these things." That's why we have the police. That's why we have anything. Why don't we let this process and the free market run its course, clamp down on the bad people, which the City Council has done, and revisit this issue to see if we resolved it, rather than throwing a widow out of her house and disenfranchising thousands of San Clementes who utilize vacation rentals for themselves and for their friends and relatives?
Thank you. Last card, Mr. Joe Janus.
Hi, Commissioners. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but after this first speaker, I decided I had to get up here. I'm not sure where the mayor's council is across America, but about two months ago, I approached one of my neighbors that have a giant vacation rental across from me, and I asked him if he could cut the occupant load down to eight, because when 20 people come into that house, it affects our neighborhood terribly. So he suggested I talk to the manager of Seabreeze. So I did. And the manager, I said the same thing to him. The manager said, "We'd only make half the money then." So he gave me this card and said, "You know, you ever have a problem, you call this place right here." So I said, "Okay." So, two days ago, I left a message on his phone, on his phone, because the neighbors that live next to there came over to my house and said, "Hey, we were up at 6:30 in the morning, listening to people in a pool. I got no response." So, we had eight people around that residence that have complained about it. So we don't care about the mayors across the nation and lobbyist groups. We care about our community. We talked about North Beach. I thought that they were allowed in North Beach. I'm not sure what the problem is there. But in southwest San Clemente, if you study the general plan in Title 17, you'll find that they're not compatible with us. So, either you cut down the occupant loads down to six or seven, or you ban them from R1 areas. It's really a hassle trying to live next to these places that have 20 people coming into it. And like I say, eight neighbors complained about it. So if we're gonna worry about the mayors across the nation or our residents, you gotta make up your mind what you want to do.
Okay, that's, oh, we have one more card? Mr. Jim Lanier?
Handwriting, handwriting challenge. Sorry I got here late. Maybe some of this stuff has been addressed. I heard Mr. Bieber talk about the ironclad rules, and I'm here to tell you that ironclad rules don't work. I've got probably the most noticeable property next to me, as far as complaints to the city, complaints to the Sheriff's Department. We've also contacted the property management company as well. These ironclad rules, my particular property was being sued by the city, and I just learned a day or so back that the city decided to settle with some new conditions, a lot of what these ironclad rules are supposed to take care of on future properties in the city that rent like the ones next to mine. It puts the burden on the homeowners around these properties completely. There's a lot of dropping the ball between city, sheriff, property management company. If you call the property management company, they're not going to call the sheriff or let the city know that there's a complaint on the property, but all the homeowners around that property have already been affected. And that's what happens over and over again with these properties, especially the larger ones like Mr. Janus talked about with large occupancies. One of the new conditions for the property next to mine, since the city decided to settle instead of taking them fully to court, like was, which was the original tent, was to limit the occupancy to 10. But that's overnight occupancy. I asked the question, "What about guests? Guests are okay." So I could still have the potential, like I've seen in the past, of 20-plus people in the backyard of this property till our city has the 10 o'clock shut-off, which a lot of times, it goes past that, and all day long. It's just not fair to citizens that buy properties, that contribute to the community, volunteer, such as my family. I mean, every one of my family volunteers for something in this city. I was a coach. My wife's on the Ed Foundation Board. My kids volunteered at the Ocean Festival. We're committed to this city. We're connected to this city. We bought in a residential neighborhood, thinking we'd have neighbors similar to us, and we've got a hotel next to us, plain and simple. Those ironclad rules, it puts too much burden on the homeowners, and they're very, they're impossible to enforce. If you say three cars that are property, sheriff comes out and sees 10, the question you get is, "How do you know the other seven aren't your neighbors or visiting some other properties?" And the answer is, "You don't know, unless, what, you videotape the guy next to you?" So, the rules are good if people abide by them, but the problem is, everybody's trying to skirt around them. The more people that they can occupy, the more visitors they can entertain, the higher the value they get for the property. And it's about money. These are businesses in residential neighborhoods, and that's why they should be banned in R1, and that's probably why they should be banned in R2 and R3, as far as I'm concerned. I understand the Coastal Commission wanting to make affordable properties. These properties aren't affordable. These properties are renting for $6,000, $7,000 a week. I mean, what's the average income for a family in this neighborhood?
Thank you very much. Are there any other cards of people who wish to speak for public comment? With that, we'll close the public hearing. And here's the cards. And with that, Mr. Tamian, I guess you're up for a staff presentation?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight, I would like to go over a few things, some that we've already discussed a little quicker than others. We have, last week, we had a really good meeting where we talked about a number of standards, and staff felt confident with the, kind of the direction that we were taking with this. So I'd like to go over some of the standards that we've discussed that staff feels like staff feels like we have some good direction on, and then move into the things that we would like to get further clarification on. The ones that we have covered and staff is comfortable moving forward with are standards related to parking, trash, quiet hours, minimal rental lengths, annual rental limitations, the amortization process, and the permitting process as well. There was also a discussion of no owner occupancy requirements, and so with those, staff is comfortable moving forward. I know there were some comments about these issues, and, you know, one example being Commissioner Eggleston wanted a more description on the parking in the form of a chart, so we've, you know, made, started working on those kinds of changes, but as far as what the actual standards were, we feel, we feel comfortable with those.
Commissioner Crandall has a question.
Just so I know what these apply to, do we have a definition yet of the short-term rental, the home sharing, et cetera, and the ones that this applies to and the ones it doesn't apply to?
We do have a definition, and we'll get to that.
Well, so I can apply these, any chance we can get that definition before we start trying to make rules for it?
We can. I, I mean, I can tell you what, what staff's proposal is at this point, is that most of the standards are going to apply, whether it's a home share or a full-time STLU, like an exclusive STLU.
Most are?
Yeah, most would apply.
Which ones will not?
The annual rental limitations.
For home shares?
For home shares. This is what staff is comfortable with at this point. We'll get more into this at the end, but ultimately, going through these standards, there's just not a whole lot that, that seems like it shouldn't apply to home shares as well.
Okay, continue.
I have a question.
Yeah, go.
You mentioned home shares. What about home exchanges?
Well, the difficulty with home exchanges is that by, for all intents and purposes, the end result is that they're being rented exclusively with no STLU operator on site. And so, as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned, at this point, staff is really looking at treating them like a full-time STLU.
Okay.
We see there, there's a potential for a loophole.
Yes, there is. Big potential.
We just, we don't, we want to eliminate that loophole.
Okay. And now, if I'm clear here, you're gonna go over, once again, what you feel we all agree to with regard to all of these proposed standards. Is that correct?
I wasn't planning to.
Well, I think, I think, I think we need to refresh what we've, what, what you feel that we've all agreed to.
That, I can definitely do that.
All right. I think that's-
That'd be good for me. By the way, for the record, I did review the three hour and 27 minute video of last week's meeting, you know, it was absent.
Okay, so for the parking, last time, there was a lot of discussion about this. At this point, staff is looking at creating a chart that effectively requires one space for every bedroom of an STLU with one guest spot as well. Staff had originally came last week with one parking space for every two bedrooms, and the impression that we got was that that was not, not really supported.
Okay, so, we're gonna go with one car per bedroom?
Yes.
Because it says here.
Says here, "One parking space per two rental bedrooms."
That's what we, that's what staff brought last time.
Okay, so what is it?
In the discussions about that, it was, that was not really the, didn't seem like the entire commission was really leaning that way.
Okay, so, do, so we, do we have a new chart here then for, for this?
Not for these standards.
Okay, so, that's why I think it's-
The standard I picked up Monday when I came back from a vacation is, reflects last week's submittal and not the changes then?
I don't know if I saw that.
Says here, "Two." One parking space, two rental.
Okay. So, this is the chart you're putting together in lieu of what we-
This is the chart I'm putting together.
All right. That, that's, that's important, what we-
And for the record, this is what you, the commission, agreed upon last week?
Yes. 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 And that's why, that's why it's important for us to go through each and every one of these standards so that we know what you think we've agreed to. Okay? And I like this chart. This chart's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the quiet hours, or excuse me, the trash, that's basically the same thing that we talked about last week. It was double the minimum requirements. I worked with the, some staff from the Environmental Services Department of the city and identified a minimum amount of trash containers. Specifically, we're looking at two 90-gallon containers for trash and two for recycling as a minimum, with additional language to require that they can't be, you know, they can only be put out, you know, on the street for, during trash collection times and so forth. The quiet hours, those were, those are the same as what we discussed last week, which would be 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday nights, and 10:00 PM to 9:00 AM, Friday and Saturday nights. At this point in time, the direction that we're taking this is, is applying these times to the requirements of the noise ordinance as it relates to all properties, simply extending the hours that it applies for the nighttime hours, the nighttime decibels, to these hours.
So, I remember reading the video. Commissioner Crandall mentioned, "Why don't you conform it just to the existing ordinance?" As, what you're saying is you're moving the existing ordinance in the direction of this time?
Yes.
To make sure it's a common hour thing from an enforcement standpoint?
Not, not amending that title. We're amending, what we're saying is that the hours that are mentioned in that title, the decibel limits that are mentioned there, apply to short-term lodging units during this time period for these uses. So, we're basing it off of the-
Say that, say that back to me again.
Okay, so, we're not amending the noise ordinance. What we're doing is we're taking the standard that's contained in that noise ordinance and applying it for a longer period of time to short-term lodging units.
So, it'll be the same for, for all residential properties?
Yes.
Including short-term rentals, which will be 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 PM to 9:00 AM, Friday through Saturday?
No. The, the limitations on noise are gonna be the same. The hours of which they apply are going to be longer for short-term lodging units, and, and what they are now, shorter for residential, for the rest of the residential units.
That's-
You know, when I reviewed the tape, I thought Commissioner Crandall made a really good point. Let's make everything-
The same.
The same. Wouldn't that be easier for-
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement? And just to make sure that the hours of STLU conform to the normal residential. Mr. Panis, do you have anything in common on that? That was a comment that Commissioner Crandall made on the video when I reviewed it. I thought it was pretty common sense myself.
As far as it being different, I mean, we would have, we would know where all the vacation rentals are, so we would be able to identify whether it was a normal residence or a vacation rental. So, we'd be able to apply the standard if it was different. But as far as ease, it would definitely be easier if we had one standard.
Yeah.
It would always be easier.
Yeah. It, it should be one standard for everyone.
We'll, can we say that for further debate? Was the rest of the commission pretty comfortable over the last week, which you saw, we'll, we'll just defer it until after the staff break, we go into discussion, but food for thought, food for thought. Okay.
The minimum rental, the minimum rental length, we discussed last time, a minimum rental of five nights, based on the, how everybody returned their, their, the matrices from two weeks ago. That seemed to be a good medium. We discussed it last time, and it seemed like most of the commissioners were okay with a minimum of five-night rentals. The annual rental limitation, we discussed a cap of 90 days or 90 nights per year. There seemed to be general consensus on that. The, the amortization, that was a two-years or transfer of ownership, along with a requirement that the number of citations required to trigger the revocation hearing of the STLU permit be reduced from three citations to one citation.
Mr. Chairman, the TOT currently says three, and then if there's a big violation, it's one. So, are we, so, in effect, are we trying to change the TOT at this point?
You know, we would take this recommendation and incorporate it into a change in that, in that section. I mean, what we're gonna do is make a recommendation to the city council.
True, that's point. This is a recommendation.
Yeah. Is, is one giving enough due process?
Do we want to talk about this now?
No, let's say this for, let's say this for discussion. Mr. Eggleston, give the city attorney a time to think about it.
All right. And then the process, in terms of permitting, was discussed to be a, what we're gonna call an STLU zoning permit. It would be administrative. It would be processed, which would be processed by staff. It would not run with the land, and it would automatically expire upon sale or transfer of the property. There was some discussion about recording the document so that the cities notified that a sale happens. Staff's investigating that as a possibility right now, and if possible, I think we're, we'll include it for your consideration.
Yeah, I meant, yeah, that's fine. I heard that on the videotape. That and the insurance issue, and we'll save that for discussion too, maybe get a straw vote or something in those areas, on both those. Okay, continue?
All right, so those were, and then the, the no owner occupancy requirements. There was, I believe, consensus that that was entirely unenforceable and that we, there was no direction for, for that in the ordinance.
Mr. Eggleston, you have a question?
Well, yeah, I'm, 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 wanted to find out when we're gonna be starting to talk about the ones that are in limbo here, instead of going on to different subjects at this point.
Well, I think we're about there. I think we're down to, I think we've got everything done. Everything's discussed, I think, except for maybe clustering, density and zoning. Zoning obviously looked like a big issue last week. Density obviously comes to the fore here with other stuff. And so, so I think the only issue we have, we're conforming to the quiet hours. You had some question on amortization, and then there's eventually a discussion on recording and insurance, which I was gonna save for a discussion later. Maybe get a straw vote because you, I know they're presuming. So, I, what's left to discuss, I think, by this little sheet I picked up this week, right? We are pretty well-agreed on parking, trash, owner occupancy, renter occupancy, annual rental limitations, minimum rental length. We need a slight discussion on quiet hours to conform with Commissioner Crandall's type thing. Amortization, I guess, is an issue, and then the only thing about process is recording and insurance. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, my major question here, since we're already talking about proposed standards, should we not be talking about those ones that still are in limbo now instead of waiting later on in the meeting?
Let's get it over with. Let's see. We have three issues. You want quiet hours and amortization. Is that correct?
And it's not a real long presentation.
Okay.
So, you can get to your-
Okay. Let's go on. You wanna go on with the presentation then, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, hold on.
Okay, so there was a lot of, we've seen a lot of emails and copies of different staff reports from the Coastal Commission, and included different cities like Solana Beach, Pismo Beach, San Diego, all with different kinds of conclusions. And for that reason, and plus we're processing our LCP, we have a working, you know, dialogue with Coastal Commission staff. So, Adam and I, early this week, had a discussion with their staff members, and the way they described it is the commission themselves, you know, because a lot of the commissioners are actually from municipalities like ours and, you know, are really familiar with this issue. The commission is somewhat mixed in terms of in favor and against vacation rentals. And they reflected back to us that so long as a community takes a balanced approach, that you have a good chance of getting your, your recommendations approved by the Coastal Commission. Those cities can be, going to be exactly the same. We're looking, you know, they're looking at, you know, coastals in terms of a resource and having visitor accommodations. They don't just look at your short-term vacation rental-type uses. They also look at your hotels. They also look at your state park campground and a variety of different things in totality, and evaluate your, your process and, I mean, your, your situation. And if we came in with something which includes things like, you know, the tourist-oriented areas as our focus area for vacation rentals, and then include maybe the owner occupied or whatever we're calling them right now, the-
The home shares.
Home share type of uses together, then that might work. If you start to put lots of restrictions on them so that they kind of are allowed, but they have things like 21-day minimums and things like that, then that probably will have, you know, some suggested modifications from the Coastal Commission further down the line. So, that's what, that's the feedback we got. It was actually pretty receptive, and I was kind of expecting to hear kind of, "No, we want you to allow them everywhere," but that wasn't the case.
Okay, thank you. Well, yeah, we have a good, through you and your experts over there, we have a very good relationship with, with the Long Beach office, I know, because I've been up there with you. Okay, continue. And that's it?
Okay. All right, so-
Okay, we're gonna go into zoning. Can we just then break right now and just get Mr. Eggleston's thing, some of these small things off, off the, the map, and then we can really-
Absolutely.
Good, please. It appears to me, the quiet hours issue should be a low-hanging fruit. Can we get concurrence on that? Everybody was agreement of these hours last week. Is there any, any motion or any discussion on just conforming to the same number that Mr. Crandall suggested for, it would be easier for code enforcement? Yes?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, we got very specific direction to focus on STLUs.
Yeah.
And in expanding any one of these standards out to the larger community is kind of going beyond the direction. Just wanted to case, bring up that point.
Mr. Root? Yeah, yeah. Light's not working. Yeah, the, I think the purpose for these quiet hours was to discourage the kind of, you know, you know, difficulties that we've been hearing now for, what is it, eight sessions, six sessions?
Okay.
So, as long as those hours reflect, you know, some discouragement of the kind of negative behavior that leads to the, you know, the difficulties that people have encountered, that's, to me, that's the bottom line. If it's the same, fine, is what we have elsewhere, fine, but if it needs to be different. I think, what was it again, nine to, or eight to? Nine to eight on weekdays and 10-
For the existing?
10 to 9, that's what's on the chart right now.
What's on the chart? 10 to 9 on weekends?
Mm-hmm.
And 9 to 8 on weekdays. I'd like to see a little shorter, but I could certainly live with that-
Okay.
-from my point of view.
Yeah, my only question is that you don't know how long these people, one, you don't know how long these people are renting for. You've got, it could be somebody's rented for a month or two months, and you're putting them to a different standard than the residential houses, even though they're short-term rentals. You don't know who, how long they're renting for. They just happen to be on your chart.
It's a long-term rental?
No.
About 29 days, a long-term rental.
Okay, let's say this guy rents one weekend, and then we rent another one for 31 days, then 29 days, then 14 days, and they've got different standards in all the units around. It just seems unreasonable that you could enforce it. Things are changing too fast. There's no way, I mean, you know which ones are registered, but you don't know how long the rentals are for, et cetera. It just seems like it's a can of worms to try to do it. And I also feel that if you're saying, "We're doing it to protect the neighbors," you're telling me then they're not compatible. then they're not compatible. Boom. Done deal.
Good point. Mr. Eggleston?
Well, while we do know what the short-term rentals are, and have a list of them, when a neighbor calls the sheriff's department for disturbance, the sheriff's department's not going to know or really care if it's a short-term rental or if it's another type of occupant. They won't know that. They're going to become confused with regard to, well, this is a short-term rental, so it's 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., but the owner down the block who lives there, is that 10 o'clock, or is that not? It becomes very confusing and very inconsistent. And when things like this are inconsistent, they're difficult to enforce. And I know this, we've received direction from city council with regard not to expand this beyond, you know, the entire city, but I think we have to consider here, if you have, if you have rules and regulations which are inconsistent, they're not going to be enforceable. They're going to be hard to enforce. So I think it's important to come up with a standard. I mean, if in fact it's quiet hours or 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. for short-term rentals, should that not be for the rest of the city then? You know, I don't know, but it just seems to me you're, it's a double standard here, and it's hard to enforce, and it's not going to be enforceable. And the sheriff's department's not going to know it.
Mr. Crandall?
And I think Wayne brought up a very good point. You know, our code enforcement isn't open at night.
Well, they're trying to.
For one, they're going to try to, but I think very wise neighbors are going to say, "The heck with calling the city. We're calling the sheriff's department and making the complaint." Because then it becomes a legitimate complaint versus, I don't know what we call an enforcement action, so it's recorded and whatnot. Do you have comment on that?
The way the system currently is working right now is the sheriff's department forwards those calls over to us, and then we respond. So the sheriff's department is getting the calls, but then we go out. Their sergeant identifies which ones are vacation rentals, and then, because they have a list of those as well, and then we're dispatched.
And you're commencing now to man, have a man, a person on at night during?
We're right in the middle of a pilot program right now, for the month of February. Next, this is the last week, so we've responded, I think, to two vacation rentals in that time.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I have a question for you. If someone calls between 9:00 and 10:00, how do we decide it's a short-term renter or just a regular residence?
How do we determine that?
You cannot decide until you get to the site.
Our officers have laptops in the field, so they can pull up, you know, every vacation rental while they're in the field.
No. Well, you wouldn't know that addresses has STLU permit, but you don't, you can't know at that particular night if the place is rented out.
Oh, yeah, we, I, well, if there's people there, we would assume that it's being rented out. When we make contact, if we made contact, and let's say the person identified themselves as the owner, we have the names of the owners on record, so we would be able to verify that.
Right.
If it was a long-term rental, it might be a little tricky in identifying whether they were there long-term or there short-term. Could ask for their lease agreement. They could always deny, you know, providing that information.
Right. But if a neighbor is upset by the noise between 9:00 and 10:00, you go to the site, and you find out that's actually a long-term renter, that's a little waste of your time.
Well, no, because the law apply, right now, the law that's on the books, between 10:00 and 7:00 are quiet hours, so.
Right, right. I'm asking, if we were to change the quiet hour for short-term renter, starting from 9:00 o'clock, and then between 9:00 and 10:00, it's an area that you have to decide on the site.
Yeah, we'd have to decide on.
Right. You cannot know beforehand. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think for practical reason, it's difficult to enforce.
Yeah. And Mr. Root?
I would just suggest that we keep the same quiet hour as residents.
So, but just to clarify, you said you wouldn't, you might not know if that STLU was being rented that night or not. You actually could know that if that information, if the reservation information were provided by the owner or the agent, correct? We could have that information as part of the condition of?
Yeah. If it was provided to us, and we would have it, yeah.
And we could require that as part of the condition of the license of renting it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a condition.
Thanks.
Mr. Waxman, you have any comments, or are you just holding it powder dry?
Just seeing it through.
Okay. I kind of lean towards Mr. Crandall's thing of making it the same as a resident, make it easy on the internal ordinance, and make it easy on code enforcement, and make it easy on everybody, just have one set of hours. I think we could recommend that to council. They can always dial it back if they like. We're making a recommendation here. I thought Mr. Crandall's, when I looked at the videos, made a lot of sense, just make the times the same, and keep it simple in this particular area, is my view. Kind of want to straw vote real quick, get this thing wrapped up. Who's all in favor just conforming with the current residential standard?
All right.
This is, this is the current residential standard, right?
No.
No. They can go to 10:00, 10:00 o'clock.
So let's clarify, the numbers that you presented to us are, during the weekends, are 10:00 to 9:00 in the weekends, right?
Yeah.
And 9:00 to 8:00 on the weekdays?
Yes.
So what's the current residential standard that we're talking about?
I think it's 10:00 to 7:00 every day.
10:00 to 7:00.
10:00 to 7:00 every day. So they could be up as early as 7:00.
All right.
Rethink that. Okay, let's move this along for the staff briefing. Pardon me?
Did you want to change your vote?
I didn't vote. I'll vote in favor. It's fine.
Okay. All right. I think that's pretty well wrapped up for now. We need, I know the city attorney's working on reducing to one, and we've got some other steps. So let's press on with, in the zoning, I'm assuming, which will include also density and clustering, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one question on the annual rental.
Okay.
If operator has his permit, or whatever we're going to call it, and rents, everything he rents is considered short-term regardless of the length of time, correct?
If he has an STLU, every rental counts as a short-term?
Every time he rents it, is that considered short-term?
No, it would only be for rentals that are 29 days or less.
And we're saying 90 days, but if he rents twice for, 245 days, does he still have 90 more days to rent short-term?
Yes.
I just want to make that clear. So that unit can be occupied by renters for considerably longer than 90 days.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could be on 40, 30, 29 days.
That's what I want to make sure.
Okay.
Just clarification.
Okay. We'll dial back here until we get all the way through the presentation.
All right. So zoning. Staff has put together some maps based on the zones and areas of the city that we were talking about last week, where STLUs would be permitted. The first area was the downtown mixed-use zones, and these would be the MU 3.0, 3.1, and 3.3. The second area was the pier bowl specific plan, being the residential medium, residential high, and mixed-use zones in that specific plan, which are all of the properties covered in red. The fourth, excuse me, the third one was the North Beach focus area, and this was, this is predominantly MU 1 and MU 2, and there's about 10 residential high lots that are included in that. Yeah. And finally, the MU 5 zone, which is on the south end of town, kind of called the surf zone. So with those areas, we're looking at, there's two standards that we haven't covered, and those are density and clustering. Clustering, we're just going to call distancing requirements for now, and I'll cover that one first. Part of the issue with these areas is that they are rather restricted in terms of their gross area, and so distancing becomes kind of an issue in that, depending on what the buffer is that you put around it, you quickly limit how many STLUs you can have in any particular zone. And a good example of this is, this is the pier bowl area. I picked a lot on Coronado Lane, which is right behind the, basically one block off of the pier. And I'm showing you what a 300-foot buffer looks like and what a 100 buffer looks like. A 300-foot buffer in this zone is going to effectively only allow like five STLUs in the pier bowl. And a 100-foot buffer is going to end up with allowing about 12, 12 or so, which is a severe limitation on the numbers. In the mixed-use zone, staff's really not concerned about the density or cap per se, and that's because pretty much every lot in the mixed-use zone could be a hotel if the market would bear it. And it's, it just doesn't make any sense to limit certain short-term lodging units and not limit, you know, there is no other limit on other short-term lodgings. So because of that, in these areas specifically, staff feels comfortable moving forward with no distancing requirements, and using a cap in residential zones to limit the number as far as what they are in residential zones. So the caps that we were talking about, the density limitations, we were talking about last time, there was, 1.5% was the number thrown around, and that's, when we, when we apply 1.5% to the total number of housing units in the city, we get about 500, which is the number of permits that we have now. There was some discussion about applying a number to a single residential zone. The pier bowl area right now has a density of about 6% of the housing units are, are short-term lodging units. Specifically, with the zones that we just discussed, being the North Beach mixed-use area, the downtown mixed-use, the pier bowl specific plan, and the MU 5 area, there are currently 73 short-term lodging units in those zones. So now with that, I'd like to kind of move the discussion over to home sharing. Home sharing, as we've discussed it, seems to be a less intense use of a property, being that somebody who lives there long-term is on-site, always through the, through the rental periods, and therefore, the impacts to the neighbors are going to be less because there's somebody with a vested interest in maintaining neighborhood relations is available. This is what cities like Santa Monica and San Luis Obispo have done. They actually only allow home sharing. What we're looking at doing is identifying those certain zones that allow full STLUs, and then allowing home sharing elsewhere. Based on previous discussions, staff feels that we could propose to allow home sharing in all residential zones, knowing that so much of the city that's covered by HOAs would have the ability to regulate themselves in that way. And so this would really mostly affect the residential areas west of the freeway. The home share is going to be described as a short-term lodging unit, where the owner of the STLU is on-site and is renting out a portion of their home, not the entire thing. There is going to be a, kind of a safety valve in this, to discuss multifamily dwellings, where somebody owns one or all of the units, is on-site in one of the units, and rents out to separate units. We would, we would consider that home sharing, as we've discussed it before.
I think, well, my understanding of home sharing is, it's for each individual dwelling unit. If someone is occupied one unit in a multifamily building, and they, the manager or the owner rents out the other dwelling units, and for you to consider that's home sharing, that's not the intent of what we talked about.
Mr. Edgles?
I agree. I think multifamily units have to come under a different type of category other than home sharing. I think you're trying to group them together to the point where it's not going to be, where it's going to be confusing and not workable. But I have a question here under home sharing. So that means if someone has a home with four bedrooms, that they're allowed to rent out three of those as short-term. Is that correct?
They'd be allowed to rent out three rooms as one STLU. So one rental agreement, three rooms, essentially, but not three separate rentals.
Okay, so.
And the owner's on-site.
And the owner's on-site.
And the owner's on-site. So they can rent out three bedrooms in their home, as long as they live there?
Yes.
And they would have to have enough parking. So they'd have to have two parking spaces for the homeowner, and then one additional per bedroom and one guest space, right?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
What's the definition of a bed and breakfast? How many units?
It is, a bed and breakfast inn means a structure wherein the owner of the property lives, and rooms are rented on a short-term basis, and where for compensation, lodging and one meal are served daily in a common dining area, no bed and breakfast units shall contain kitchens.
What's a difference, breakfast?
No, because you can only have one rental agreement for multiple rooms. In a B&amp;B, if you've got five rooms, you've got potentially five different rental agreements, five different parties.
Say a minimum, how many rentals you have to have in a bed and breakfast?
Well, a bed, a bed and breakfast, there's, a bed and breakfast requires a conditional use permit. If somebody wants to open up a bed and breakfast that only has one room, they can do that. This is, on the flip side, a home share is limited to one rental.
It's not, well, it's not one rental, you're renting out three different rooms.
You are renting out three different rooms.
You can't have one rental agreement for three different rooms.
Sure you can.
Yeah, you can.
If you have a family.
You could rent out the whole house, a whole house that has five rooms, you could rent out.
Right, okay.
If five different groups of people get together, and they each go in on one rental agreement, then, then, yes, you may have
I see, I see.
Five groups.
Okay. All right.
I don't think there's enough distinction between the two.
I'm not clear on it either. Mr. Root?
Well, I think a bed and breakfast is more of a service-oriented use. You have an owner that's actively providing a service, and that service is one meal a day.
The lines get very blurred. It's one of those things, how you, how do you enforce it? I mean, very quickly, you could morph into a bed and breakfast, and how would you ever know it?
I, it seems, correct me if I'm wrong, this is how I understand it. In a bed and breakfast, a family could come in and say, "You've got three rooms in your bed and breakfast, and, you know, you know, I've got, you know, me and two other couples," or, you know, "me and, you know, three kids," or something, "and I'm going to rent all the rooms." That might, might be the case. But probably more often in a bed and breakfast, if you've got three rooms, you're probably renting it to three different parties.
Right.
Whereas with home sharing, you're always renting it to one party. You have no choice but to rent it to one party.
Exactly.
No matter how many rooms you have, right?
I realize that, but that's just, that's the problem. There's an overlap.
Okay. All right, I did have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood from, during your description. Are you saying, are you including in home sharing if someone, say, if there's a duplex, and one person owns one unit and lives there, but does not own the other unit, and that other unit is the one being rented out, that's still considered home sharing?
That would not be considered.
That would not be. Okay, good. Thank you.
In other words, the home sharing should be restricted to one home. One home is people living in one household. It's one dwelling unit. Inside that dwelling unit, if some people wants to rent- Inside that dwelling unit, if some people wants to rent out some room to help to make ends meet, and we all agree with that. But if it's a large multifamily home, or even a multiple units, a townhome, or even a triplex or duplex, if the owner resides in one unit and wanting to rent out the other unit, that should be treated differently. That's not a home sharing. That's sharing a building.
I tend to agree with that. You're going to home share one house, not a non-common wall type thing. One house, that's what you're saying.
Okay, I have a response, but I could weigh, go ahead if you want, okay. I think the point here, and, you know, we could call it a lot of different things versus, you know, if it's a single-family home, use it as a duplex, but I think the common element here, in my mind anyway, is that if there's someone there onsite, someone else in the building, then from what we've heard in all many hours of testimony is, I don't think we've heard one person say, have a complaint about a unit where there was an owner onsite, or I shouldn't say a unit, a building where there was an owner onsite, if I'm not mistaken. And so even if it's a duplex, if the owner's onsite, well, that owner is a neighbor to other people, that owner is going to hear any noise that goes on, so I think the theory is, is it's going to be much more discriminating and enforce the quiet hours and all that sort of a thing. So we could call it, you know, three different things, we can call it one thing. I think, at least in my mind anyway, the goal is, you know, is to have someone onsite who's that owner, who's got that vested interest and who's a neighbor to the other people.
I have a question. You have it there within a habitable room, but if in fact it is a duplex, and both units are owned by the same person, that person could live in one of the units and rent out the other unit, is that what you're saying? Because then it would have to be changed here within a habitable room. That's because it doesn't make sense there.
A habitable room just means that the owner is not going to, you know, like sleep on the, you know, on a couch in a room that's not meant as a bedroom. So they, they sleep in one bedroom, not that they're effectively renting out every bedroom in their house.
I see your point. I think that we could adjust this definition. If that's the will of the planning commission to make it apply, this sounds like just to a home, and so we would want to make it to apply for a person that lives and resides in the same multifamily building and lives in one unit.
Right.
So we can expand that to reflect that.
Okay.
Has his own kitchen. I mean, he rents out the kitchen and he has to, okay, go on, continue please.
If there's no other questions about home sharing, that was the end of my presentation, and I'd like to get some direction on some of the bigger issues that we talked about here tonight, potentially some more strong notes.
Okay, so just let's start with Commissioner Ruhl.
Just a quick word on the home sharing. I think I've got in my head that it's a single-family unit, a duplex, maybe a, you know, like a small four-unit apartment or something like that. I imagine that some limit on the total number of units might be in order. We wouldn't want like a 12-unit apartment complex that has essentially a live-in manager, perhaps, to be considered.
And we did discuss that, I think, a meeting or two ago, and we were going to at least start off with the cap with the definition of hotel, which is six or more. So just by the current definition, it couldn't be more than five in any one building.
Commissioner Wu.
Jim, you sent us this, can you explain to us on this exhibit? Because I think they are terrific information that will help us to discuss the issue.
Because for the public's
Yeah, I believe so.
Information we got through charts provided by staff, and hopefully they can show to you this, shows us where some of this is.
Well, all of those pages, if you can go over.
Please, yeah, there's several, about six charts here that we got.
So this is just vacation rentals. This is vacation rental units in its bite density. So the indication of the dots are that when it's a green dot, it's one to two units, when it's a far, and when it's a red dot, it's eight to 13 units. So it shows you, most of them are the smaller units, but then we have a couple larger units in the medium zones. And on the outskirts, in the inland ranches.
So most of those are covered in HOAs, is that correct? Not all of them, but many of them back there that should have some CCNRs that they're contending with?
Do we have a scale on this map, Jim? Trying to figure out how, how far apart these are on average. Has anybody looked at?
Well, if there's a scale, we should be able to kind of get an idea.
What? Now I can see it.
I think we were told that those circles are like 300 feet around.
That'll give you a clue.
So we circle in the green, there are one to two STLUs now.
Is that better if I go kind of up like this? See if, what do you have next one?
Yeah, please.
So this is by, this is the density per land use zoning district. So this gives you an indication of the concentration of different areas. So let me blow that, this is going to get an overall, you know, in the, you know, in these areas in town, they're, you know, pretty low density. Back here.
I hope the Pier Bowl would be.
The higher densities are five, five point.
And that density means what? Five to 10 per what?
Per hundred.
Per hundred? Per hundred units or hundred buildings?
No, it's a percentage of the total lodging units, so it's 5% say that there's 100, you know, units and there's five in that area. So as you can see, the Pier Bowls, you know, the darker color indicates a higher intensity. The red's the highest intensity, and orange is kind of the medium. Red down here on Montalvo area, actually, Southwest is pretty high, because you have less lots. For the actual geographic area, it might not be as high as, you know, some of these other locations, but because there's less lots, the percentages.
I have a question. I'll ask you through with yours.
Oh, Commissioner Wu, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I have.
Okay. The question, I want to talk about density for a moment here. And so if we're considering STLUs in the visitor-serving areas and then allowing them a home sharing in all areas, the question I have, for example, in the Pier Bowl, if we allow, I don't know why we came up with 1.5 for the whole city. To me, that doesn't make sense. What makes sense to me is the density in a specific area. That's what makes more sense to me, and that's more rational and common sense to me. And so I think that we should be doing the density based upon the density in a specific area instead of 1.5 throughout the whole city. That includes homeowner associations, that includes, it doesn't make sense. If we consider, for example, right now, in, let's just take the Pier Bowl, the density in the Pier Bowl is 6.17. How high of a density do we really want to get in the Pier Bowl? That's the question I have, because there's limited parking. Do we want every building to be turned into a vacation rental? And I think we have to really consider that, because that has ramifications way beyond just even density, as far as what that does to a, to a specific neighborhood, because there are, there are, there are even in that area, single-family homes in that area. So what does that do? I don't know. But density is an important figure here, I think.
Commissioner Fox.
Okay, so these are, just to be clear here, these are dense, current housing densities. So red is the highest density we've got. So we're talking
They're densities of how many STLUs there are, based on total housing units.
Okay.
That's total in the city.
In that specific area.
In that area, okay.
So a 1.5%, which would be, it'd be a citywide cap, so of total housing units, correct? 1.5%?
It was discussed both ways. The matrix that you received two weeks ago actually said 1.5% within any zone, but there was some discussion about it being 1.5% just as a total cap. That's really what we're trying to get to.
Did we reach out to any of the, one of the presenters showed us, I think it was nine jurisdictions and their percentages now. Have we, do we know how those, that cap is working in those particular jurisdictions?
No, I have not specifically asked that question.
I don't think that number was a cap, it was just, oh, it was there.
Oh, so that was currently.
Yeah, like San Diego has 1.9, it's just kind of like, I think that's just a global number.
Yeah, the caps that I've seen are typically when they just, they want to basically grandfather the ones that they have, they just say, okay, we're going to have a permit, and the only people that get it are the people that already have it, and over time it's just going to go away.
Okay. So the average of those numbers was about 1.55% roughly?
Yeah, typically.
Is that, so let me throw an idea out there on this. What if we had a percentage, an objective, but we also looked at how many we could have on parcels, say, parcels containing three or fewer units, we have a maximum, you know, allowance of, say, one STLU, and then on parcels with four or more units, we go 25%, no more than 25% on parcels containing four or more units. And doing that, I think, would be a good way to, I'm just wondering how that would look citywide. What are your thoughts on that?
I think you need to, I didn't catch what, the drift there.
Okay, so my thought was that if we had a, say, 1.5% objective here, citywide, and then we distilled it down to even, you know, looking at each parcel, say we've got a parcel with three or more units, we would say, okay, no more than one of those units on that parcel can be used as an STLU, okay? And then on parcels that have four or more units, we'd apply some sort of a percentage of whatever, because we don't know what, you know, every one's going to be a little different, so we'd say 25%. We'd end up with 2.5 units on a property that's got 10 units, so we'd have to work through that somehow, but you get my point? So I was initially thinking about this buffer in your map with a 300-foot buffer in the pier zone, that really tells a big story, that would really be a limiting factor with 300 feet. 150 feet seem more realistic. So what if we did that, took out the 1.5% and looked at that versus those two, you know, the percentage limitation of four or more units, and then one unit per three or more unit parcels, parcels with three or more units, and look at how those two look together?
I think, for me, I'd rather just see it simple. If you want to put a cap on any one geographical area, you know, give it a number, or you could arrive at the number based on whatever you think of appropriate percentage is for that area. You have different characteristics. We specifically identified the Pier Bowl based on the general plan. And that being a visitor-serving area plus a long history of vacation rentals in that area. That area, you know, because of the characteristic, might be able to handle a little higher density than, you know, some of the other areas in town. One way you can slice it, you know, there's plenty of other ways you can slice it too. You could look at a cap on all residential areas not to exceed. Right now we have a cap set by the city council of 510 permits, so right there, that's a cap. But you can define it in the site and cut it down lower depending on the characteristics of the area, if that's what the commission would like to do.
So then we could just take out the 1.5% and just take it off the table in that case? We don't need to talk about it anymore, just take it out of the matrix?
Well, I don't think we're ready to take it out, but that's a good, that's a good input. Adam, we have some other charts you want to show, share with us that, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Crandall, you have a comment?
And you had said in the Pier Bowl, just about everything was already zoned for motel?
No.
You made some kind of comment like that?
In mixed-use zones. In mixed-use zones, hotels are allowed, and there's no limit to how many hotels are allowed. They could have a lot of STLUs.
So that, once again, shoots the percentage in an area across the board?
Yes, but the thing about the STLUs being in a mixed-use zone is that they're, we feel they're much more compatible with a mixed-use zone. I mean, you're living on top of commercial. I mean, there's, at that point, you could be living right next to or to a, you know, 20-room hotel. Any type of spacing, we, really, they could, yeah, there would be no density proposed there, you know, whatever the market could bear in that situation.
Okay, so you have, is your light on or?
It should be on, it's not.
Okay, it's a light bulb malfunction up here. Okay, go ahead.
I just kind of, I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Wayne's question, make sure I understood. I think that your question, and if I understood your answer was in agreement, was that we agreed to this last time, your comment was we should do these percentages by zone.
Yes.
So, you know, Pier Bowl should be whatever, 1.5% North Beach should be 1.5%, the MU should be 1.5%. And is that what we currently have agreed to? That we're doing that 1.5% per zone, or is that 1.5% for the whole city?
There's no agreement so far. That's one of staff's questions.
This is staff is just briefing us.
But just to clarify.
I agree with Wayne.
Yeah, just to clarify, if we're talking about a density limitation for residential zones, then we're really only talking about it in three specific places. There's the residential high in the Pier Bowl specific plan, residential medium in the Pier Bowl specific plan, and 10 lots that are in the North Beach focus area.
Wait a minute.
That's the only residential that we're talking about here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait a minute. You said residential medium in the Pier Bowl?
Yes.
Because you were talking about the visitor-serving areas before, which were those specific areas which are residential high, is that correct?
Let me walk you through what the Pier Bowl specific plan land uses are. So down here is, the purple is mixed-use, so that would be, you know, similar to the rest of the mixed-use.
Right.
These brown areas, I believe that's brown, is the high density. And then it also captures a little bit of medium residential along this street here, and then also kind of up here in this corner.
Okay, so it's not residential medium past the Pier Bowl area itself. Okay, but, okay, so what we're talking about here, because I want to be sure that we encapsulate this, what we're talking about is allowing STLUs in those visitor-serving areas, which would be the Pier Bowl, the Delmar area, North Beach, and South El Camino. Is that correct?
That's what they're proposing.
Okay. And allowing home sharing in all areas.
That's apparently what they're proposing.
That's what they're proposing, okay. Because last time around, I was, and to me, that makes pretty much a good sense, because last time I was talking about, what about the good operators in residential medium and residential high outside of the Pier Bowl area, for example, and in North Beach? But that's not what you're talking about. You're talking about those specific areas that I just mentioned, right? And you're talking about allowing home sharing, which needs to be very tightly controlled because it could be a big loophole for STLUs in all areas. Is that right? Okay.
I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Christian?
Yeah, I'm going to bring it up now. In that first section we did, we went through eight items, and one of the requirements was no owner occupancy requirement.
Yes.
And then we brought up the home share, which is allowing somebody in your home, and the theory being that this would be a administrative permit process. And I still am having trouble making the distinction between a short-term vacation, excuse me, a, a home share and a bed and breakfast. It's just the number of units. Where a bed and breakfast requires a CUP, and to me, it seems like it's probably less likely to be impacting the residences than a short-term rental.
Home share?
Home share, excuse me. Or they'd be equal. And I think there's some inequity here that needs to be looked at.
Another question, this home share, they, they need an STLU permit also, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so they go, they pay their, get both licenses.
Yeah.
And are on the rolls. Just to, just to make sure that that's covered.
You, you brought up a very good point, Bart. Because, because perhaps the, because the home sharing perhaps should have a different type of permit. I hate to say conditional use permit because that runs with the land. And I don't think we want things to be running with the land.
No, we do not. We don't want the burden of making it.
But it may require a special type of permit, which would be called a home sharing permit, which would be different than a short-term rental permit.
Well-
And, because they are, they, they are two different real, two really different animals.
But then against, right now, if you, if you classify the STLU, then the other ordinance that the Council's already passed, which has a lot of restrictions in it, also apply, all the noise and everything else. So, there's a layer in there, and they need two, they need two permits, too. Jim?
Just to try and help the Planning Commission out a little bit, yeah, the existing permit would apply to everything, you know, any time of a short-term lodging unit. So, whatever we decide to do administratively or through a larger or more cumbersome procedure, maybe, I don't know if that's the best way to say it.
No.
But, you know, if you wanted to make it a zoning administrator, which would be appealable, or even to the Planning Commission, you can do that. And you could separate out the home share. The distinction, I think, would be that when the home share is located outside the districts that you're creating.
Right.
That you have a little bit extra review because there's, maybe, you could say a hard, or larger chance it might have some impacts.
Right.
So, you could add different conditions based on the unique situation of every site.
Right. I like that.
That's kind of what I was alluding to, I just didn't get there.
Thank you, Bart, thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I like that, too. So, devil's advocate here, how are we going to assume that all these homeowners are going to be on-site when they're renting out their rooms or things? How are we going to control that?
Yeah.
If they've promised, then we'll take their word for it, right?
We're going to send you to each one of those homes, and you're going to check it out.
We'll send out the same police, they're going to go after folks who are violating the noise ordinance. Okay.
But that's, but that's a good point, you know? If in fact there's a complaint and a home sharing incident, would the, would the sheriff or would the code enforcement officer contact the quote-unquote homeowner who lives there and check out a license, for example, or some sort of identification, that in fact, that's the actual owner living there? I mean, that's one way to do it, you know? I guess, I mean, I want to become a police state, but, you know, I mean, I think that's something reasonable.
I never would have guessed you.
I was just thinking more of just keeping the, keeping everything in one bucket. You know, if it's an STLU, it's an STLU. Really, you know, how it's internally designed aside, it's still behaving a certain way. The use is still behaving as an STLU. So, we treat it that way.
Yeah.
Rather than have a special condition for-
So, so you're kind of agreeing with staff presentation or recommendation that, that the home share is an STLU except the owner's there?
In that regard, yes.
Yeah, it's one, but it's one, we're pretty firm, it's one house. But we're still, you know, Mr. Cranwell had these concerns, but you kind of clarified that a little bit. You want to rerun that by everybody just one more time?
I'm not advocating either one, but, yeah, you can, if you have additional or special concerns with the home share that exist outside the districts that you're designating for STLU's, which are non-owner-occupied and allowed, you could have a special permit process to, to analyze, make, require findings to ensure that those uses, you know, meet the compatibility standards of those other zones.
This is, this is in case somebody wanted to do a home share, let's say, in residential low, which you're not proposing, is that correct?
They can propose one.
Oh, you are.
The home share is proposed to be allowed in all residential zones.
All residential zones. You know, I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that myself. I think, you know, I just really, I guess maybe there is, there would be another, for me to be comfortable with a home share in the residential low areas, then we'd need to go that extra permitting step to make sure that the R, the old terminology, the R1s are properly looked at with staff review administratively. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm a little comfortable with home share everywhere.
Well, the home share can really be, create a loophole for-
That's correct.
-STLU's.
I know, that's where I'm, that's where I'm concerned.
And that's, that's not what we're trying to accomplish here. But I think it's important that someone wants to do a home share, that in fact, they do that with a special permitting process. And I think that, that's an added level of review because it can really get out of control, and we should not be creating loopholes here.
No.
Well, I suggest we don't create a home share as a different animal. It's kind of STLU.
We define it, we give it a narrow definition, we make the exception with owner occupancy requirement. Just treat it as an exception.
Treat it as an exception?
Treat it as an exception that when, when the owner is living in his or her own home or house, a room or two can be rented out. That way, we define it very narrowly.
So, you're proposing that we have owner-occupied STLU's and absentee owner STLU's, and those are like, are two definitions? Is that, is that your-
Well, in general, in general, STLU does not require owner occupancy. But if, if there is a home, inside the home, there are some room, this room can be rented out as a home sharing, provided the owner is living in the home. Now, we, we call it home, home here, home sharing.
They would still need to get the, the business license, so to speak, or they-
They still need-
The TOT license and the STU license. I'm sorry, something's up.
I think, Jim, you have more exhibit, you haven't finished.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Side chart there, so, let's go over to the next one. This is-
Show us the, see these?
Well, this one's a little bit harder to explain. This is a kind of explanation, there's a, there's a corresponding sheet here. With each one of those numbers, it'll tell you the number of lots and the number of STLU units.
So, for example, Area 10 has 94 units down there.
That's a real, that's the kind of thing that's hard to look at.
And Area 23 has 188 out of 4,000.
Okay, is everybody getting it out? Oh, there it is. Sorry, did I do those?
Right.
All right, man, let's go down.
I think it's important for the public to see some of the data that you've shared with us so that they know.
Okay, and then, this one's looking at specific areas that we've been discussing. This is the high-density zone in the Pier Bowl. And again, this is another one of those overall density maps. It's between 5.75 and 10. And these, again, are the, the bigger the circle, the, the number, bigger the number of units.
You're also showing something up in North Beach also, on that chart.
Again, we're going to create, if, you know, based on the zoning, these are going to be issues, these numbers here. And you think it goes above 5. And let's see, going up this way, there's some of the other zones. This is the Montalto Loop.
Wow.
There you go. I think you have a number of big condo buildings in there.
You do. There's some pretty good-sized units down there.
And this is the, kind of the coastal, I don't know.
Residential medium, residential high, residential medium, residential high also?
Just residential.
Just the RF.
Just residential medium.
Yeah, there's, there's Rowan's House right up there in the corner.
And the residential, the residential- Residential medium in that, in that zone there has 188 registered vacation rentals, okay?
And it's a little small outskirts, I think it's only one unit that has a high number, but there's not many lots.
Right.
And then, this is southwest San Clemente numbers, it's almost 6%.
Very high.
And, and this-
Temporal.
Right, and, and this is, that's number what, Derek? I think that's-
Number 10.
Number 10. That has 94 vacation rental registrations. And these numbers, and these numbers may be lower or higher because there may be some inactive vacation rental registers, registrants, or they may be higher with some people not actually registering. So, we don't know. But according to the TOT, TOT, by April the 1st, all vacation rental registrations are void. That may start all over again. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Do they have to register, do they have to register for the new City Council permit?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I think I covered them all.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that the, the people watching on TV and also the people on the show see some of this data that was provided to us. Anything else, Adam?
I guess just the, I'll sit and wait and-
Okay, we're ready just for us to go into discussion, I guess. Briefly to go loop back around for amortization, I think Mr. Eggleson had you to look at something now, which was, okay, the two years for amortization when we, we take things out of the low-density areas, but this trigger for revocation hearing to one, is that, I guess, Mr. Eggleson's the issue, was that, was that enough due process, or was there, was there an issue with that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it's, I mean, it's an open question, which isn't an answer you, you want. We don't know if it's enough due process until it's challenged.
Okay.
To be quite frank. But if there's a standard that's, that's put into a zoning ordinance such as this, and there are, there are adequate findings based on facts and the record to support that standard, and the property owner is aware of that standard, for example, with the CUP, a condition is imposed, it may be owners, if they're aware of it, and it's violated, that, that would then lead to some kind of a hearing revocation, which is when the due process would come into play. So, my assumption would be that, that, that taking it down to one violation would likely not impinge on due process, but again, we can't know that until it's challenged, until it's challenged in court.
And key is, the owner has to make sure he's known that we have sent him a certified letter, mail, return receipt, all that stuff.
And the standard, when it's, when it's, if and when it's created by the, the Commission and Council, has to be supported by adequate facts and the record. And as long as there's, there's, there's adequate notice given to the property owner as part of their application, you're likely in good shape with that.
Okay. Well, that will entertain some, I guess, discussions, that's because the staff needs direction. I think we've got answers on amortization.
Well, that's what I wanted to chat about here, amortization. Since now, in fact, we're only allowing these in the visitor-serving areas, the ones that are in residential high, residential medium outside of those specific areas then would, then go under a, a phase-out or an amortization, which would include residential low, residential medium, and residential high. Is that correct?
Right.
So, it would be all, so it would be all those zones except for the, except for the ones that are in, in those zones. So-
I'm, I'm sorry, but those zones would still have a cap in each of those zones in terms of the density requirement, 1.5% or whatever we-
I don't know what 1.5 means, quite frankly.
Whatever that number is.
And 1.5 is, is, is a mystery to me. So, so, is it, is it, is it agreeable that we have a two-year amortization or period for that? Is that, is that agreeable to everyone, or is it 18 months, which is for two summers? So, I mean, that-
This two years came out of the discussion of last week.
Right, right.
I was not here. I'm kind of comfortable with two years. I kind of concur with the, the rest of the Commission members that they resolved last week.
So, the ones that are, are registered now, even though they are inactive, some of them which would be inactive, would still be applicable for the amortization, Mr. Deputy City Attorney?
Potentially, yes, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners.
Even though they are inactive and, and not have-
I mean, it's, it's going to depend, again, on who comes in for the, the permit by that deadline. That, that then creates the universe of, of uses that will be subject potentially to an amortization period if it's adopted.
I'd also like to kind of add on to what Mal said. The permit process is going to be, you know, there's going to be a pretty substantial fee and a list of 10 requirements that are likely going to cost a homeowner some money in order to incorporate. So, the people that just, you know, put in a, a permit for, you know, maintaining a property right, will have to be really serious about doing it to move forward. So, you might weed out a few of those just from that process itself. And then, keep in mind that, you know, based on the direction you've given us, that there's a 73 in the zone that you're, you know, carving out, that means that there's 437 that are being eliminated from, from that process if you move forward with this particular ordinance.
Is it staff's-
Those would be subject to that.
Is it staff's impression that that would still flow with the Coastal Commission?
Well, I think that, I think it has a, a chance because you create a lot of opportunity in the mixed-use zone. And if you remember in the general plan in our mixed-use zone, we changed the regulations to allow standalone residential within that zone.
We did.
And that, I think, will actually help booster our case for allowing that because they can be STLU's now. So, I think you have a lot of capacity in those zones, so that's a good thing to show. And then, the number that we don't, I don't really have, you know, I don't really know right now, but you do also have the home stay type of use allowed throughout all the residential zones, that allows more capacity to occur. So, I think, I think it's pretty balanced, I mean-
That's two licenses for that, that home stay person, along with a separate review that we actually discussed.
If that's what you decide to do, then it would be, one would be just the regular STLU permit, and then the second would be whatever kind of administrative or other process you decide for those types of uses.
Unless they get two permits. They get the 3.2 Title Board, TOT permit, they get the STLU permit from you, and if they're a home stay anywhere, they got to go through a third administrative review.
No, 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 I don't think so. I think we would have, if you're, if you're in, in the, the zone, you would have the regular TOT permit, and then you would have the administrative permit. If you're outside that zone, you would have the regular TOT permit and whatever process permit you decide to do. So, each one would only have two.
Okay. Mr. Cranwell?
Question from Mal. On the fees that are charged for these permits, don't they have to be justified? We can't just artificially make them high enough to weed out people saving the spot?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's, that's right. We, we are legally prohibited from getting rich off of fees. It has to basically pay for, for Jim and, and, and staff's costs in pursuing whatever has to be pursued. That's, yeah.
Well, that could, but then again, that means we could actually pay for good code enforcement, good business people research, you know, I mean, there's some-
That's correct. As long as, as long as the fee can be tied to actual staff work, that will be done and that is documented in a fee resolution.
Recently, there was an article in this week's Orange County Register about Anaheim because they're having an explosion of STLUs around Disneyland. And they're proposing like a, the number mentioned in the paper was like $250 for a license for a homeowner occupied and $750 for a non-occupied.
Yeah.
And so, that, that number's in the paper, whether that would float or not. I'm assuming that they would come up with some rationale to justify the cost of the person, you know, the owner not being on site was, was, had greater code enforcement or TOT enforcement or whatever.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's something called the Mitigation Fee Act that requires any, 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 any fee of this sort to be substantiated via a fee resolution with all of, all of, all the facts that support the dollars that are going to be charged in that, in that resolution. If it can be substantiated, then, then really the sky's the limit. But, I mean, the limit is what you can substantiate with, with actual staff work being done to support the, the fee.
Okay.
Mr. Blackwell? Yes, thanks. Okay, so, just to be clear on the, the grace period would start at the time of adoption, correct? That's, that's our intent.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it just depends on, on what the, what the commission recommends and the council adopts.
Okay. That's something to consider. So, that clock would start...
Right.
For those folks outside of the zones that we specify.
Right.
From that point of adoption, potentially. Okay, I just would want to bring something up for the commissioners to consider, and that's the, this 1.5% or whatever it is that we end up embracing versus the densities. And I think it's important that, it's great that we've got some zones identified, the visitor-serving zones, as, as the area for us makes sense, but we really should consider the densities because we don't want to defeat the intent. And I think across the board here, we were all concerned about impacts to the neighborhood character. Some more concerned than others for all residential zones, but still, we should maintain that, that concern. So, if we've got the 73 and they're all grouped together, you know, we're saying we want, that could severely impact the quality of life for those folks around that 73. So, I think it's important to, to maintain a, a realistic buffer in separation and find that balance so that we can provide that, that access to folks that want to visit. We have enough of it, yet still have a balance in maintaining the integrity of those neighborhoods.
Commissioner Rowland, your light works.
And it does, for some reason. I, I agree. I think maybe not so necessary in like, you know, the visitor-serving zones, but certainly in the residential zones to have that, that distance for exactly what you were, that reason you were talking about, that could get clumped up and, you know, we don't want that sort of thing to happen, I don't think. So, that residential home buffer, I think, is a good idea. I did want to say too, Wayne, although I'm, I'm okay with the two years, I wouldn't have a problem with the 18-month amortization because, as you say, it covers, at this point, at this time of the year, assuming this is done in the March timeframe or so, it still covers two summers. So, you know, I could support that as well.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Jim. If we were to take out 330-plus vacation rental homes from the residential areas, most of the residential areas, are we going to be able to accommodate them in the mixed-use zone and the visitor-serving areas reasonably? Are these, are these areas big enough to accommodate those?
I, I would say that it, I can't say that it would be all 300, but I think that you have a lot of capacity in those zones because you have a higher density. And, you know, a pretty good percentage, when you look at all the mixed-use zones and, you know, the three maps in this graphic right here, in this graphic right here. So, we have mixed, all those mixed uses here, all this right here, all this in North Beach, which is fairly underutilized, and definitely in this southern part of the town right here. So, I think you have capacity. I don't, I'd have to probably do some kind of an estimation on, you know, what's allowed and, you know, in terms of lot by lot. It would take some work, but we could, we could definitely, I think, make a case that there's a lot of capacity there.
Within the pier zone, pier, within the pier bowl zone, there are residential high density. Are we going to put a cap on the percentage of the short-term rental units within the pier bowl?
That's a question for the planning.
If, if we were to put any restriction in that area, then, to me, 400-something, a lot of units to be displaced or redistributed. Unless we don't put any restriction there, then they're going to go somewhere or we, the city just lose those.
Yeah, I think we address, probably when we get to density, each individual study area separately.
Right.
But a side benefit to the city and the community is any of them displaced certainly have the opportunity to redevelop blighted or vacant land to put up new short-term rentals. And we're getting some potential redevelopment and improvements to areas that currently don't have them. So, it's a side benefit. That's not what we're intending to do, but it could be a side benefit.
Mr. Wood?
Those redevelopment would take a lot of, take a long time.
We plan it for the long term.
If the current vacation rental homes are going out in two years, within the two years, we're not going to see them to be rebuilt within the mixed-use zone or the visitor-serving zone. We are, we want to encourage them to go. So, there will be a gap for the city of San Clemente to accommodate the visitors for the, for California residents. It's not just San Clemente residents. So, my suggestion is we keep the, we keep the visitor-service zone open to short-term rental developments. At the same time, we use a tier system. For example, we can redraw the zone as a overlay to include the designated visitor servicing areas plus mixed-use zone plus some high-density, some medium-density. We can give them a different cap. For example, within the mixed-use, mixed-use zone, no cap. Within the high, high-density zone, we give them a cap, say 5% or 4% of maximum units can be used as short-term rental. Within medium-density, it could be lower. Within low-density, it could be even lower, say 1% or whatever the number we can come to agree with. That way, that way, we keep that, keep all residential zones still available to short-term rental, but we limit them.
Well, staff's not proposing it for all the residential low. They're not proposing any STLUs other than the home share. So, you don't really need a, a cap. Is that, is that, am I clear on that there, Mr. City Planner, what you're, you're proposing?
That's what we proposed.
Yeah, I, I understand it that for the, for the old numbers, the R1s, STLUs will, will phase out is what's proposed. And STLUs will be allowed in these areas that you've proposed and that are supported by the general plan, period.
I think it's accurate.
For the zoning stamp.
Yeah.
Okay, just to make, make it clear. Because I know some of, some of the commissioners wanted to be more broad-ranging on it. All right. Mr. Eggleston?
I'm going back to density once again. Because if we're going to get this to a manageable level by using, by having this in the visitor-serving areas, we cannot all of a sudden say, well, let's just put them all in the pier bowl area. Because right now in the pier bowl area, there are 45 that are registered. So, we can't say, well, we'll put 73 or 100 in the pier bowl area because that is going to really affect that area a great deal. Because there are single-family homes in that area that are not, that are not STL, vacation rentals. So, I think it's really important when we talk about, I don't know about, again, I go back to this 1.5. I have no idea what 1.5 is. But if we do the density for each area based upon what we see now in that area, and I'm glad that you folks did this, this is really terrific research that you did, then we, then I think that we have a guidepost and a baseline for the density for each area. For example, in the specific North Beach area, I'm getting my map out here now, the density could perhaps could be higher than what it is now in that, in that area. Not in all of North Beach, but in that visitor-serving area of North Beach. And, and because, for example, in the, in the, where is it here? In the pier bowl area, the density right now is, is over 6%. In, in North Beach, I'm sorry, yeah, in, in the North Beach, I don't have that here. What, what could that, what is that?
It's 0.5 to 3.11.
It's 6.47, but we're going to expand that a bit maybe. Is that right, as far as the north Alcamino Real or where we are? Or we're not?
I think we're in.
Yeah, North Beach.
This is the focus area from the general plan borders.
Okay. Okay.
What you're reading is the residential high area in North Beach, not necessarily the mixed-use zone. Is that, that might be two different areas.
Right. Right, exactly. So, I think it at least gives us a baseline and, and something to, to go by when we talk about density for each area. Because we do not want to create a situation where we're going to have a heavy impact about changing some of these things.
This particular area in North Beach is along, I guess it's right alongside where the, where the casino is now, correct?
Right.
So...
It's actually, the casino is right here.
Uh-huh.
And the high-density is right along here, which is in the study area. There's also high-density within this zone along here.
Does it, does it...
That's not in the zone.
Jim, can we get those screens?
This is actually not the, unless I...
You can just zoom in bottom right.
Is, is the purple area what we're talking about also to the right there? Is that what we're talking about also? Or is it not what we're talking about?
This here?
Yes.
That, that's included.
That's included. Okay.
That's businesses. That's a liquor store and...
Excuse us, please.
There's, there's a, there's a 17-unit there that, that is a condo unit.
This is mixed-use.
It's also, yeah, it's also on mixed-use.
All the blue and purple is mixed-use. So, it can accommodate commercial and residential.
Right.
And that's a good example. The coastline project is a high-density residential project that could accommodate that use.
Right.
There's just a small amount of high-density residential along Las Bolas and...
What, what about Boca Dela Playa right there?
This right here is high-density. This right here is residential medium. This right here is high-density.
And would that be included in, in this also or not?
Well, that isn't because that wasn't the direction we received.
Okay. All right. Just to be clear.
There was discussion about possibly modifying the visitor-serving areas to include areas that made sense, like, you know, that would be a good example, that area along Caillos or Caillos Bolas. Those, yes, those lots there where your cursor is, just to, I mean, that would be... But then where do we stop? I mean, we go across the street, and then from there, we go across the street. So, if we stick to just the designated, the areas that have been identified already as visitor-serving in the general plan, we're safe. We just stick with it. There was already some homework done on that. We've defined it. It's done.
Lot of homework.
That's why we did that because, you know...
It was, you know, the general plan guidelineed it was visitor-serving.
I think that's what we started with.
That was your direction.
My mission about two months and a half there.
Would that be included in this?
If you asked us to look at expanding any of the areas, we certainly can do that. We need to be careful because one of our commissioners would need to recuse if he discussed this area right here.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that talking about extending this out, this North Beach area out at some point, I don't think is a bad discussion. I just think that this is not the right time for it because this is, this is the area in the general plan that says it's visitor-serving.
It'll, I think it'll complexify the issue if we try to muck with that.
Then we, then we need a general plan amendment and on and on, so...
Okay.
And I would agree with Jim on that one.
Well, I don't know about the amendment because this is separate. We would be identifying an area base, that's the, you know, the base of our, of our direction here is, you know, the visitor-serving. But here, we modify or we design areas that are included in this.
But you'd now be saying that something, that what's currently residential becomes visitor-serving? And that starts to get into the general plan question of what's the neighborhood versus what's the, you know...
Couldn't we just say it's within the sphere of influence?
No, it's not that easy.
I did, I did have a comment on the, on the density question. I hadn't thought about that, but it's, it's not a bad idea to say, you know, to think about, you know, one, you know, North Beach has its density and Pier Bowl has its density and residential has its density. But I, I think maybe lower than what we have now is perhaps the, you know, the biggest statement we can make on it. I'm just thinking that, you know, you know, 1.5 sounds good in general, but what is the right number? And I think that's, that might be one of the things that you're bringing up. I was, we may not, this may need some adjustment. I almost feel like we should build adjustment into this. You know, we can set a number, you know, maybe kind of a gross number, 1.5, 2%, whatever that right number, whatever. It won't be the right number, but some, some number we think is somewhat close to right. And then maybe recommend to the city council that some X-years after amortization, one year, two years, three years after amortization, that we actually have a trigger that says, let's go back in, let's look, let's see what's going on. Should we lower the density in some areas, raise it in other areas, and handle it then? Because we're not going to get it...
Or expand it.
We can get it, or expand it. We can get it, we can get it better than it is now, but we're not going to get it perfect. So, maybe, maybe the answer to that is do what we can and then perfect it later.
Keep in mind that you're going to have a, a long, drawn-out procedure with the Coastal Commission. And so, changing the density is not a simple thing. It's a complex thing.
No. It is. I, I would say, see, 1.5% is based on 27,000, 8,000 dwellings in the town, which works out to about 500, which is about where we're at now. And so, there's, we're playing a numbers game here. And like you say, we're taking 300 out, but we're offering this home sharing option everywhere with direction to staff to come back with a, you know, you walk the ground administrative procedure, you know, a staff person goes out and really checks the map or whatever. I, you know, we need to bulk that up a little bit. The density, when you, when you get, if you say 1.5 density and you just go to the pier bowl, that's going to work out to be 10 or 15 homes. And so, that's not viable. I mean, you're going to end up with about the densities you'd see on the map right now at about 6% or something like that.
45 in the pier bowl.
And so, we need to be really careful on this. It's unfortunate we don't have the, the tools to make a scalpel without a, like you say, a general plan amendment that could nip over one block into, you know, the high-density area, whatever it is on North Beach, across the street, one street where there, there are already that. But I mean, we just, that, that triggers, just like Commissioner Rowland says, now it's in a general plan amendment. Where what we're going here is what is the keep-it-simple approach following the general plan, which is, I think, a pretty, with your, your option on home sharing, which hopefully the California Coastal Commission will buy into with the STU permits and all that stuff.
Rather than, just a suggestion, rather than having the commission right now, tonight, come up with the exact density on each one of these areas, I think, first of all, I hear the commission saying that they're okay with mixed use and not putting a density cap on that. So, what remains then would be these remnants of the high-density in North Beach, the small area here. And then also, oops, sorry, I missed the, where is it? Trying to get to the pier bowl here, change this, sorry. 69 again. Okay. So, in the pier bowl, the brown areas and then the orange areas. And what we can do is, if you can give us an indication on whether you want to see the density stay as it is, based on the existing situation, go higher or be lower, then we can come back and give you some, some of our kind of professional advice on what we think the densities in each one of those would be. So, rather than, you know, getting into the exact number, just give us an idea of where to go on each one of those, and then we can come back with something.
Commissioner Crandall, we'll start with you. Commissioner Crandall, we'll start with you and the work left.
Got a question for you. We seem to have always ignored the trailers down on the beach for vacation rental. And I walk that a lot and there are a lot of people there for just the weekend. And is there a reason? I mean, are we not allowed to consider that?
You're going into a private residential community?
Well, no, I'm just wondering if they're vacation rentals. I'm not trying to control them.
Okay, there's issues with the non-conforming use there, so I'd really like to kind of talk that over with our.
Just like talk that over. Director of Community Development and come back to us at appropriate time.
Unless it's the direction of the whole planning commission, I don't think.
No, I was just more concerned with coastal commission. Hey, if we, if there's more than we think, good for us.
Cecilia, please step forward.
Just real quick, it's, it's not designated for development, it's designated open space.
I understand that. Right. But it's more what the actual use is that the coastal.
So you don't feel it's appropriate to put, throw the long-casted net of STU over the top of?
Well, it would be a change to the open space zone.
Okay.
And I think that's.
We don't want to do that.
And that's.
I'm just saying it wasn't on the existing uses that are, may or may not be conforming. And it would add to the count.
You're trying to take credit add to count for something that's not supposed to be there? Okay. Kushner Wu.
Yes. We'll talk about all these regulations, all the restrictions to STLU units. If we apply them to the current Pier Bowl, many of them will have to go out because they don't meet this new requirement.
Right.
Well, the distance would.
Well, maybe.
For example, parking.
Potentially.
Parking would take on many of them.
Or it might limit the capacity.
Even if we decide to give it a generous density cap, it won't happen in Pier Bowl. And all the regulations we're talking about apply to a few homes in North Beach and mostly in Pier Bowl. My fear is that it will not be able to accommodate those displaced vacation rentals effectively unless we lose the restriction in Pier Bowl, which will cause the Pier Bowl to be completely commercialized. That is to say, to change the residential to a commercial district, that's probably not what we wanted to do. But the dilemma is we don't have a place to accommodate all this business. Well, maybe it comes down to San Clemente just don't want those businesses.
That's another direction to go.
Mr. Crandall?
Yeah, I think for those who weren't involved in the general plan and listening to the GPAC and Jim was part of the GPAC, we are a bedroom community and that's what everybody sees it at. We welcome visitors, but we are not a destination resort. And it doesn't appear that the people want a destination resort to a full degree. They don't want to be a Huntington Beach. So we want to welcome visitors, which is great. We want to make sure our citizens are happy here. They're the ones who are building this. We want to create business and income for our businesses, but we have to be careful that we're not reconfiguring what the people want. Whether or not we want it or not isn't really the issue. We're tasked with implementing the general plan and the vision statement. And I think we got to keep that in mind.
Did the general plan say we are a bedroom community?
I'll read the tourism introduction chapter of the general plan to you right now if you'd like. I have it open.
Sure, go ahead.
Unlike many other beach communities, San Clemente's character and identity are not based on tourism. Rather, San Clemente strives to excel as a well-balanced community that welcomes visitors. We recognize that San Clemente's beaches, cultural and historic resources and businesses enhance both a resident's quality of life and tourist enjoyment and experiences. We recognize that tourism is often associated with costs and benefits. Tourism brings costs in the form of parking, demand and traffic and the need for increased public services and maintenance of public facilities. Tourism can also provide benefits in the form of revenues for local businesses, sales and trans proximity tax revenues. Our tourism goals, policies and implementation measures seek to establish and maintain a favorable balance between tourism's costs and benefits and to manage tourism to create a net positive impact on the community's quality of life. That's the tourism introduction, opening statement for, out of our general plan. So, Mr. Eggleson, you have another part of your sermon to share with us here?
I'd like to throw another thing into the mix here that we've really not talked about that needs some sort of discussion, and that is home exchanges. Now, one can say that a home exchange, it is not relevant because it may not involve any cash exchange. But there are those home exchanges that do. So again, I don't want home exchanges to be, as a loophole for STLU, for vacation rentals. And so somehow we have to address home exchanges.
So what the staff recommendation is, is to treat them like a regular STLU.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be a loophole.
All right. Then that's, that is, that satisfies, that satisfies me. But then we need to put that in the documents, that home exchange, home sharing, and that needs to be in there, so.
Okay. So we're reaching closure here. Is there any, oh, question back, well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, that just ties into our definition. Are we going to come up as staff looked at a new definition? And do we have it available to read?
For what?
STLU. Yeah. We've had discussions in previous meetings about a new definition, maybe one that departs a little from the other definition that the city has.
Is the one in the ordinance suffice or do we need to expand on the one that's in the ordinance, the 3.2 ordinance? Isn't that fairly well definitive there already?
You mean an expanded definition of what the TOT section had? Not for consistency's sake, I haven't really expanded this definition. What I've done is define other uses that an STLU could be identified as and specify that those are not, those are not consistent with STLU. So an example would be expanding the definition of bed and breakfast inn, of home share STLU, home exchange, hotel, that's a very much expanded definition at this point. Lodging unit, general motel, single housekeeping unit, and then short-term lodging unit covers pretty much any reference to types of dwelling or lodging that we have in the zoning ordinance. And thereby the STLU is defined similarly in this section as it is in Title III.
Sure. So you think, when we get a final report on this, you're going to have a very complete description of STU that will complement and expand or not conflict with what has been proposed earlier with the Order 1617 that was passed by council here recently?
Yes.
Because it's, goes on for about a third of page, I think so. Okay, so we want to, we want to make sure these definitions are correct. It's the 11th hour of this general plan, we were all stumbling through, brain-dead on definitions. Then we got the land use plan for the coastal plan and we had to go back and re-look at all of them all over again to make sure we all had them focused, so. And they're very critically important and we know that.
I'd just say you could go back into the record and listen to what was read once upon a time if, you know, it was just read off a sheet of paper. If you like that, present it to us and we can maybe embrace it.
Do you have enough direction from us? Check density, we'll follow the general plan, where we're going to now go forward with an ordinance here?
I think so. Just so you know, you didn't really give me feedback on whether you wanted the densities higher or lower. I'm going to, going to give you what the density is now. And I think Commissioner Wu is right in some cases, like the Pier Bowl, that density will go down. Because just the rule of no more than five on one lot is going to reduce the number.
And the parking and everything else.
And then the parking would be another thing that would be a big consideration. It might, but it might not.
I don't think we've visited this for the last time, so it's going to take an iteration effort.
So, yeah, the number wouldn't go down based on the new rules.
But I think it's going to come back with feedback from the coastal commission too. So we, we'll see how this home sharing thing works out also. Final thing I'd like to really wrap up, I think, because I was pulling off the video, is a couple of issues that Commissioner Eggleson's been pulling on and we need to get traction on, a couple of which I kind of agree with, which is the deed needs to be recorded so we have some sort of record to the city.
The permit needs to be a recordable document. Otherwise, we're not going to know if it sells or not.
So I'd like to get a straw vote that we encourage incorporation in the, either probably the other, the ordinance that we've recently passed by, I guess is where it resides, not really in our land use issues, is a recordable, some sort of a recordable document, notification in that ordinance so that we know when the property sells, so you really know.
So that's only really, if we're going to.
We're recommending to the council, they consider it for that ordinance.
Yeah, that's, it's great. I think it's a great idea, but just consider that each permit has a lifespan of one year. As we're talking about one year, so this would have to be done every time that permit is renewed, just to be current on this.
Just a point of clarification, the TOT permit is an annual permit. You need both permits to operate. The administrative permit and the potential other permit that we're looking at would be run with the ownership. So it could potentially, you know, go for a number of years.
Okay, okay, that's good.
So that would be the one that I would record.
Okay, all right.
Which one would that be again, just for clarification?
What's that?
Which one would you record?
The zoning one.
Okay.
Yeah.
The zoning one?
The one associated with the ordinance that we're developing now, not the TOT ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So I'd like a show of hands that we, for a straw vote, I guess, from the commission to encourage that incorporation. Well, if it's going to stay with us, we can make a recommendation to you. Go ahead, sir.
I would, do you have any comments on that, Mel? Anything that?
No.
No? Okay, so.
Your agreement, are there any issues with that? I just, just.
No, I, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I agree with Mr. Petches. The way to do that would be to record if that's the commission's desire. The zoning administrative permit, which was discussed at length last time, it wouldn't be a CUP. It would run with the ownership. And then if the ownership is transferred, then that would be part of the notification process. There's no problem legally with that at all and it could be recommended.
Do we have a sense of the commission on that, a straw vote? All in, okay, passes six there. The other thing he brought up, I noticed on the video, he's brought up several times is, and I think it's critical, is insurance, that maybe that does go to the TOT ordinance, but where the, I think that's not in the ordinance anywhere that I can read. And I think the strength of law of that could have some broad applications in, of, that the owner brings a letter from the insurance company, says, yea, verily, I'm insuring an STLU. Just like it could be a sober living home, because I think that's next on our plate, just like it's going to be in the home occupancy ordinance. I think it has, you know, we need a consistency, we need the strength of law and ordinance on it, so share your comments.
The current TOT ordinance doesn't require that proof of insurance be provided as part of the short-term lodging unit application. There is a provision in the ordinance that says that an applicant has to provide any information that the finance director deems appropriate to administer the permit or to approve the permit. So we feel that that gives us some flexibility to ask for additional things that we may need, such as insurance. But it wasn't anything that we codified.
And so to me, I think that's something that's critical. You want the strength of law and ordinance behind, particularly for consistency across some several other ordinances and stuff and land uses that are coming our way. And sometimes when we're inconsistent, that's what we get legal action on. Would you like to comment on that there, Mr. Assistant Attorney?
Sure. Mr. Chair Commissioners, first of all, if, what was said allows, allows the city to do exactly what the commission is asking. So the leeway given the finance director and staff to impose this kind of requirements is adequate. At the same time, in terms of consistency, it would be within the planning commission's purview to recommend to the council that as part of this new zoning administrative permit, there be a condition placed on it that requires this type of insurance. This is not going to be a CUP, but it, but it acts very similarly to a CUP. And a CUP can have these types of conditions. And so what you could do if it was the planning commission's decision is to impose that condition, which would then mirror staff's discretionary authority in the TOT ordinance.
I'm not considering imposing it. I'm trying to get a sense of the commission to recommend to the council for consideration to give it a.
Exactly.
Strength of law, as a best practice. I would think consistency across the board have, would have a, and if a serious implication is we, this thing we've been dealing with for a couple of months is the first of a trifecta.
It would be permissible to place that as a condition to the zoning permit, whatever that, that looks like as it's recommended to the council. There's no problem with that.
I'm not, I wasn't considering it part of the zoning tied up. It'd be more the recommendation for another iteration of the TOT.
That, that works as well as, as a recommendation.
I think appropriate place for it.
Sure.
As you come in with your sober living home, yea, verily, residuer to do business, you also have insurance for that purpose, for that unique purpose. Same with the home occupancy, you know, you get insurance for the purpose that you're intending to do there. And if there's equal, if it's equal across the board and has a strength of an order, it's a strength of law, that I think it strengthens staff's position when they, someone challenges them on, or somebody got over time 10 years from now. That's where I think Commissioner Eggleson's coming from. I kind of, kind of agree with that. I think it's a best practice that would, I would think the staff would want to embrace to roll out across all ordinance.
Well, I, I think, my light was on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Technical.
You didn't see, yeah, technical problem. But, you know, I like the idea of requiring, of people having the insurance, but the only hesitancy I have is if this is insurance that protects them and their home as opposed to insurance that goes to the city in some way or goes, you know, protects people in the neighborhood or something, if it's only for that home, do we have a place to make them jump through that hoop? Is that, should that be our, you know, if it's going to protect other people in the neighborhood, if we need that, then, then yeah. But I'm a little hesitant just because if it's just a hoop that they're going to jump through, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide the city anything, so.
Mr. Wu?
Well, I think it's important to ask for commercial insurance coverage because they're essentially a business. In addition to that, I'd like to suggest that we add some building improvement to the units, such as a simple thing like alarm system or fire sprinkler system to get the unit.
We already have a fire sprinkler systems code, been in our code for like 20 years.
Not in single-family home.
Not including for new construction, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's a burden on the applicants. All you do is you call your insurance company, say, send us a certificate of insurance to the city and you're done.
Right.
Every business that does business with other corporations has to do it. We had to do it as an architect. Clients would say, we want to make sure you're covered, even though it doesn't cover us. And you call the insurance company and they send it. No charge.
The city council on the TOT has deemed these as businesses. And so if they are businesses, then they should be required to show proof of insurance, pure and simple. And I think we have to have, we should really have a recommendation to the city council that the insurance is part of the application process, not at the discretion of the finance director, but as, but as a line item on the TOT, that in fact they have to provide insurance.
I agree. Mr. Black, are your lights on?
Just to add to that pile of comments, I just, I agree that we need to sort of separate it from the land use discussion.
Right, it would be a recommendation.
Yeah, it's just not even a.
It's not in our bailiwick, it's just a recommended council.
Recommendation.
Applying it, you know, for this particular use in the TOT ordinance, but also that would apply to other things we know are coming on our menu here. That I think would be critical to that, and that we, we impose the same requirement on all types of uses in some of our residential areas that are beyond just of certain, you know, a family living in a house. Mr. Crandall?
This is for the attorney? Are we creating some kind of public thought that the city requires insurance and we're checking to make sure they have it? So when they trip on that property and there isn't insurance, we hold some liability because we didn't make sure they had it?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Commissioners, no, I don't. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Commissioners, no, I don't believe that we would have any liability. The zoning permit, which it's now clear would not, would not be tied to the insurance requirement, would require the property owner to hold the city harmless, defend, indemnify, et cetera, so there would be no issue there.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay, straw vote.
Straw vote on best practices, recommendation to city council for the TOT and other, and other potential uses of the best practice across the world, which is proof of insurance. All in favor? Passes. Six, zero. Staff, any more direction? We think we can get something put together.
I have, I just asked Adam just in case, but yeah, we have everything we need, so. Good job.
Okay. The Director of Community Development happy with, her trailer park is off, still off, off the island?
Well, I wanted to thank a number of the commissioners and staff for coming up with the suggestion of visitor-serving for the vacation rentals. I think that's a good start, and I want to thank staff for coming up with the home sharing in the other areas with certain restrictions as far as an added review for that, which I think is important.
Absolutely.
And so I think that helps us satisfy a lot of the concerns that we have.
It's only 8:30. Anything else? We have our traditions, Mr. Ruhl.
You have two more hours. Come on. Isn't it 7:30 already?
Read it. It's 7:30, it's 7:30 somewhere in the world. We've got 26 times.
Unless, unless someone wants to sit around and keep chatting, I'm going to move that we adjourn to the adjourned regular planning commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on March 2, 2016, in Council Chambers at City Hall located at 100 Avenue in Procedio, San Clemente, California.
All in favor, second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six, zero.